Good evening, everyone. I will call all our meetings, the Public Board Meeting of May 22 to order. The Richmond Board of Education acknowledges and thanks the First Peoples of the Hunkamianum Language Group, on whose traditional and unceded territory we teach, learn, and live. Welcome to our guests in the gallery and those viewing online. We have two announcements tonight. Thank you, Trust Hamaguchi.
As noted in the board's strategic plan, the district actively sees unconscious bias and privilege, systemic discrimination, and marginalization based on factors such as ability, color, gender identity, gender identity, indigeneity, political beliefs, religious beliefs, orientation, and socioeconomic status. With this commitment, each of the Richmond School District recognizes its pride season, which refers to the wide range of pride events that take place over the summer, June to September. And two SLGBTQI+ communities and allies come together to spotlight the resilience, celebrate the talent, and recognize the contributions of two SLGBTQI+ communities. Although special attention is put on the pride events during the summer months, they have happened throughout the year in many communities. Our district would like to acknowledge the GGLGQ2+ communities and their allies, recognize their positive contributions to our community, and wish everyone a happy pride season.
Thank you. Trust one.
Thank you, Madam Chair. June is National Indigenous History Month. In the month of June, we celebrate National Indigenous History Month on Indigenous Peoples' Canada. This month is a time for learning about, appreciating, and acknowledging the contributions of First Nations, Indians, and British Peoples who have made a difference in Canada. Further, and allies with the Summer Show Stakes on Tuesdays, June 1st, we knowledge and honor National Indigenous Peoples' Day. This day is an annual reminder for all of us to celebrate the unique heritage, West culture, and outstanding contributions of Indigenous Peoples across the country. As reflected in the board's strategic plan, Indigenous history perspectives and learning approaches are embedded within district planning and practice, as still are provided with a plenty of opportunity learned about that and engage Indigenous culture. Indigenous History Month is a reminder of our shared responsibility to amplify Indigenous voices in pursuit of true standing and conciliation. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, are there any materials not included in packs available to the public?
All material have been included in the meeting package and published on the website. Thank you.
Two, we have adoption of the IDA. Are there any additions or corrections to the IDA? Oh, thank you. Seeing none, I have trust sergeant move to secondary. Trustee Hamaguchi, all those in favor? Thank you. We don't have any presentation briefs or special recognition in this meeting, but we are at an opportunity for questions from the public. Members are invited to come forward with questions, comments. No, it's not. Thank you. And we have our executive report from our superintendent.
Well, very much, Madam Chair. Evening, everyone. As we approach the final weeks of the school year, it's an appropriate time to celebrate the excellent work that continues to happen in our district. I know that trustees have those celebrations in different forms. Earlier today, trustees joined up and found families at local elementary school for a celebration of a stunning mural that was created by renowned Moscow artist, Deb Sparrow. We're certainly grateful for the teams and collaboration that happens in our school communities, and yet another recall of schools partner with communities in ways to support student in our district. Recently as well, the Board of Education recognizes employees who have been with the district twenty-five years. Certainly proud of our employees, and it was an opportunity to celebrate the many years of service and contribution to Richmond School District. And we had employees from all sectors, all departments in the organization, and the feedback was very positive. June is also, as we know, so many activities happening across the district. And as we said, it's not only to celebrate, but to recognize the accomplishments of staff, but also to recognize those employees who are retiring from the district this year. Those who retired during the school year, and as well as those who will be retiring at the end of June and way into August. So certainly, I know that we'll have the opportunities to celebrate the employees who have contributed much to our district. I would like to just conclude by highlighting another point of inspiration. Earlier this month, trustees and staff attended the School District Student Forum. Quite an inspirational day, listening to our students and including their suggestions and ideas, as we know, lead to better outcomes for all students. We see from the video that shared with you tonight, our students were involved in planning and lead that particular day. And of course, again, I just have a opportunity to say kudos. Thanks to young people, and especially staff and adults in those buildings, who continue to provide opportunities for young people to present themselves and to share all that is good about our district. This time, I'd like to invite Assistant Superintendent Niss to introduce the video, that Student Voice Forum. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Good evening. In video, we highlight the Richmond School District Student Voice Forum, an initiative aligned with Strategic Priority Five, Goal Three. This important event underscores the value of creating a connected learning entity where students' voices are encouraged, valued, and embedded. This year, students were directly involved in the planning. They collaborated closely with district staff to design the day specifically tailored for students. Their valuable input was instrumental in shaping the event and helped to ensure that it resonated deeply with their peers. On the day of the event, interactive group sessions were led by alt facilitators who created a supportive environment for meaningful discussions. Trustees from the Board of Education were also in attendance, eager to listen directly to the students' perspectives and engage in conversations about their experiences and ideas. Please, please join us. Watching this video is explore how the Student Voice Forum empowers our students, nurtures leadership skills, and strengthens our commitment to providing the best education for every learner.
Good morning and welcome, everybody. What better way to talk about student voice than getting the students to talk themselves? You need the students to come forward with their ideas and share their opinions to plan events like this.
We're all people of Mother Dr.
Having students be a part of the planning definitely can make a big difference in the event. You have kids' input, kids who will actually be at the event, participating in those activities. It's really nice to be able to state my opinion and my voice and put it towards something that I care about, and I'm sure lots of other students care about as well.
Like, students want us to be heard. They want to be empowered to tell people what we need, just to find a sweet spot between what adults teach us and what we also want to learn.
What would you think would be some of the more popular things that people want to talk about?
The transition from elementary to high school, like graduation, I'm listening, it got a lot of votes, because I know that a lot of students are scared, or like, just unsure of what they're doing after high school, like, I know I am.
I found that the feedback well represented what we actually needed and wanted to hear. And it's really interesting to see which topics that students were more interested in than others. And it's important through Student Voice Forum that the students gain that power to voice their opinions on what they want and what is needed.
She really wanted to see what we think of the topics or that they had found to be interesting from last year, and she incorporated what we had to say. And it made me feel that I have a say in things and that I can definitely make a change. It had a very big impact on me, as that they're actually actively listening to what we're saying, and they're trying to incorporate our suggestions into their decisions.
Exactly.
We were definitely involved in the process. We added our student input, and I think it's really important to have student voices in the process of the planning, because we understand what students experience and what students want in events like this, and what are the core issues in the education system and in our experience in schools. This is another leadership opportunity that I find super valuable.
We're going to be playing Simon Says, but it's not going to be Simon, actually. It's going to be Katie Says. Katie Says.
Katie Says, Tucker Sherritt.
I'm actually loving how interactive the audience is, especially with our energy boosters, and just like what we have to say.
And so, the work we do as a district, it's all connected to making sure that you are successful, that you experience the best of your educational journey within the Richmond School District. And the only way we can do that well is when we listen to you, the students.
As a result of this day, I hope that attendees go home feeling like their voices are heard and that they are valued in this community, their voices, their opinions.
I think the school district has shown many ways that they care about our students, especially creating events like this, Student Forum, where students are able to really vocalize what they want to say.
I hope the students learn the power of their voice, the power of sharing and expressing how you think, because you have to speak up for yourself. It was basically the students who decided on the direction of this whole forum. Richmond School District's motto is "Our focus is on the learner," and that's something I've heard growing up. And the fact that the trustees are coming to this conference to hear our voices and to listen and to have one-on-one conversations with us really means something.
Any questions or comments? I trust you to block them.
Do we? I haven't looked like that. Are we putting these videos on our website? Are we sharing it on social media? It's just so good. It'd be nice for our public to see that, kind of, you know, what we're actually doing with the Student Voice.
Truly, truly, just invite our communications.
Share the views on our district website and our social media. There's also Executive, Superintendent's Executive Report section at... It's a collection of all the videos that created this.
I can't remember if I saw it on Facebook, but it was really good. Yeah, thanks.
Go ahead, trustee sergeant.
Yeah, it's awesome. It looked like it was an awesome day. I couldn't make it, but I'm really interested to see from that planning meeting, those dots, I was to see what was the most important. Is there any summary or anything like that? I would really be intrigued by it. It looked like we had the least dots, and then I'd be interested to see those. It's possible.
Through the chair. There, so some of the you saw in the video was captures of as we went through mornings, students made sessions, and those things did pick up. All of sessions were very popular, and in fact, the feedback from students on next year's is more time for that conversation. And we are filing what we heard from our students, which was incredibly powerful, and do plan to bring it back.
Thank you.
Just one more comment. I thought that the hip-hop artist that walked the students through, you know, doing a song and writing verses and coming up and performing them, I thought that was very powerful, because a way of sharing their voice in a very way that they actually became really comfortable with. And I thought it was quite an amazing tool that is, you know, to get in touch with those students. So I think, I guess, coming, you know, something they can relate to is so important. And it was powerful, I thought.
Thank you. It was a real treat there. And I think for me, that one of the most important things was to see the comfort of the kids in the room, and the comfort of us, too. Because that, I think, speaks to, I think, is that there's trust there. And I think it was really evident in the dancing, the trustee Hamaguchi, superintendent, I mean, there was always a lot of moving, and the kids were just, as trustee Devontae said, quite willing to get up and share who they are, which is really quite something. Thank you to everyone. Everyone worked with them prior to put that there. It was wonderful. Thank you. Item six is approval of minutes prior to meetings. Record of an in-camera meeting of the Board of Education held Wednesday, April 24, 2024. And we have a regular meeting of the Board held Wednesday, April 24, which is attached. May I have a mover and a secondary, please? Moved by trustee Wong, seconded by trustee Sergeant. All those in favor? Thank you. Business arising from prior minutes. We have approval of the 24-25 bylaw, and we have a report from the Secretary Treasurer.
Thank you, Chairperson. On May 16, 2024, we received a new capital bonds letter from the Ministry of Education and Health Care, confirming the ministry's funding support for six classroom additions for Tommy Elementary School, according to the Board's five-year capital plan submitted in June 2023. According to the ministry's requirement, in order for the Board District to proceed with the project, the Board is required to adopt a capital bylaw. And this capital bylaw is on page 222 of the public meeting package today. So staff recommend that the Board of Education approve the capital bylaw by three, by way of three readings into the meeting. So thank you to Chairperson.
Thank you. So the recommendation from the Secretary Treasurer is that the Board of Education adopt a capital bylaw number 24/25 CPSD 38-022 by way of three reading. Do I have consensus that three reads of the 2024-25 capital bylaw take place in this meeting? I will read the first reading of the bylaw in full. Capital bylaw number 24/25 CPSD 38-02, capital plan 24/2025. A bylaw by Board of Education of School District Number 38 Richmond, hereafter called the Board, to adopt a capital plan of the Board pursuant to Sections 143.2 and 144.1 of the School Act. Whereas, in accordance with provisions of the School Act, the Minister of Education, hereafter called the Minister, has approved the capital plan of the Board. Now, therefore, now therefore, the Board agrees to the following. A, surire the Secretary Treasurer to execute project agreements related to the expenditures contemplated by the capital plan. B, on approval to proceed, commence the project and proceed diligently and use its best effort for complete each project substantial as directed by Minister. Observe and comply with any order, regulation, or policy of Minister as may be applicable to the Board or the projects. And, D, maintain proper books of account and other information and documents with respect to the affairs of the projects as may be prescribed by the Minister. Now, therefore, Board enacts as follows. The capital bylaw of the Board for the 2024-2025 capital plan, as approved by Minister, to include the reported projects specified in the letter addressed to Secretary Treasurer and Superintendent, May 16, 2024, is by adopt. This bylaw may be stated as School District Number 38 Richmond, capital bylaw number 2024/25 CPSD 38-02. Can I have a mover and a secondary for this reading? Moved by trustee Hamaguchi, seconded by trustee Wong. Thank you. I now call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? The first reading carried. I will now read the second reading of the bylaw in summary, as trustees have the full bylaw in front of you. That the Board of Education, Richmond, approve capital bylaw number 2024/25 CPSE 38-02. Through the law, the Board agrees to authorize the Secretary Treasurer to execute the project agreement and commence to proceed. The approved projects comply with all applicable laws, regulations, and ministry policies. Can I have a mover and a secondary for the second reading? Moved by trustee Bliza, seconded trustee Sergeant. All those in favor? Opposed? Oh, pardon. Seconded, what did I miss? Are there any questions? I'm sorry, I turned the page too fast. Questions? Go ahead, head chargeant.
Well, thank you. We're very excited to get another addition to the extreme growth that we're seeing in city center. You know, it's with mixed emotions, because it's a prefab modular, six rooms, going on an overcrowded school with the same bathrooms and gym, the same library, same sports fields. I don't want to be gracious, but it's just the way that we want our young people to go to school, in prefabs attached to already full school. And our capital plan asks for an expansion to Tom, expansion to Brick House, and we're asking for, we need desperately two new brand-new schools in cities. I hope the board knows that this is only a very small part of the Act, in the very emergent or youthful in city center. So we'll obviously approve the cash, and we're getting to the district. But I just noted that prefab modulars are a very small band-aid approach, and we are very hopeful, very hopeful that two new cities centers will come, and we'll keep working on getting those. Thank you.
Trustee Yang.
Thank you very much, Chairperson. Yeah, just a few comments and then a couple of questions as well. And seeing that we're in a new project in our district, that's certainly welcome news. Anytime we get ministry funding, that just means that our students are going to fit in some way, and we're getting the help necessary to improve our learning environment. Being the school trustee liaison for two last school, I can tell you that parents are... Or perhaps I should take a step back. So Tommy, as a start, was a small neighborhood school, you know, all those folks on Kilby Drive and all the neighboring side streets. But now, everybody in that community is looking west of Garden City Road, and they're seeing all these condominiums going up in the Captain Village. And the reality of Tommy having to absorb all that enrollment is certainly something to worry about, I believe, and I'm sure folks around would as well. And so I think the short term to really address those immediate pressures is prudent. But, you know, it's been said time and again at this table that the enrollment pressures, not only in this neighborhood, but in the city center in general, all throughout Number Road, that part of town. We really need to address that, and the way to go about it is the permanent school spaces that we've been advocating for. And so, you know, there's troubles in the ground for condos in that part of town. We also need to see some troubles in the ground for school spaces as well. So looking forward to that, and I'm sure that all of us here will roll up versely to get to that end goal. And then, just a few questions, quick questions. So the timeline of the project, as well as cost of the budget? I don't know if we have that information.
Yeah, for sure. Thank you, trustee Yang, and through the chair. The cost is approximately $9 million in total. It is based on the current estimate of the current project, which is about $1.5 million per modular classroom. The timeline, because of these are, because these structures are prefabricated modular classrooms, so, and that's one of the reasons that the timeline is, it's quick. We're expecting to have these classrooms with a year.
So on the number of seats as well, because Brick House is also getting six classrooms? So I assume that...
It's approximately 150 seats. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Trustee Devontae.
Yeah. Well, you know, I think we should also be somewhat grateful for these modular projects. I know they're not perfect, but, you know, a couple of years ago, when we presented to the Standing Committee on Finance, we were in dire situation and facing population growth with nothing in city center. And this growing population. So the modular housing was in response to our plea to that committee. They heard us. And it takes a while to build a school, and it takes a while to secure the property, the land to bid on, and secure the funding from the ministry and ourselves. So this is certainly going to ease the crunch. It's perfect, because these modular classrooms also put pressure on infrastructure within schools. They weren't for that many students, but I, you know, I think it's a good fix for the time being, and, you know, hopefully, along the way, we can accommodate the growth in cities, sir. And, but, but I do think that this is certainly a reasonable answer for the time being. I am grateful for them airing our pleas from a couple of years ago. So that board advocacy, for sure.
Thank you. Now call a question. All those in favor? Any opposed? The second reading is carried. I will now read the third reading of the bylaw, as trustees have the full bylaw interview. The Board of Education, written, approved capital bylaw number 2024/25 CPSD 38- The Board of Education Richmond approve capital bylaw number twenty twenty four slash twenty five CPSD thirty eight dash zero two. Through the bylaw, the Board agrees to authorize the Secretary Treasurer execute the project agreement and to proceed with the approved projects and comply with all applicable laws, regulations, and ministry policies. Can I have a mover and seconder for the third reading? Moved by trustee Blotny, seconded by trustee Yang. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion and care. Thank you. Yes, third and final reading is carried. The twenty twenty four slash twenty five capital bylaw has been read a first, second, and third time is adopted this twenty second day of May twenty twenty four. Thank you. Item B is a schedule of school charge twenty twenty four twenty five. Report from the Deputy Superintendent.
Chairperson, this report begins on page twenty seven of your packet. And there is a recommendation attached, which is before you, I'll walk you through important parts of this report. So the purpose of this report is to provide background information on the school charge for the twenty four twenty five school year and to confirm that all fees charged within the school district are in compliance with the school and board policy. The report will walk you through one provisions of subsection two of the School Act. And also I'll germane to this report, Port Policy One Diversity and Equity. All Policy Six Two charges is for services. Say at the outset that the ministry requires that we have hardship provision, both of our policies, one oh two and six oh two, speak to that particular issue. And I'll also with the board that you can be confident that this district does an amazing job of ensuring that all of our learners who are experiencing any hardship are well taken care of and cared for, so that they're not excluded from certain products and or experiences. So you can be confident in that. What consultation process we work through, so we set these charges at the district level. We would seek for our schools to consult with their communities and establish what is important for them. And now I'm going to walk you through elementary charges. So there are no required charges. Schools will charge at the elementary level. They're all optional. And in the report that there's one for school supplies. Our purchasing department does an outstanding job of securing supplies at a significantly reduced cost. And those are voluntary for families. They receive the products at a reduced rate. And in the event, again, that there was any hardship provision, then we'd make sure that students were well taken care of. You'll notice the chart is also optional, card and cooking and snack. Perhaps not all schools provide that. And so they establish fees based on the nature of what they prepare. So there's a range of fees that are there. I'll also point out for trustees that where you have numerical values that are added, that denotes that there's a change from the charge last year. And then lastly, we have the agenda fee. And that's not required, but we certainly encourage our families to purchase those. And some of the varying the fee is because some schools personalize those agendas to a greater extent. So there's a slightly increased cost. So again, you can look at and see that there's standardization in terms of what the purchasing department charges, what schools charge based on that. The agenda varies between, I think, well, in some cases, packs pay for it. Varies if they charge me five and seven dollars. And then the kindergarten range significantly between zero and twenty dollars. Moving on to secondary school fees. So there is a basic school fee for all secondary learners. That's twenty eight basic fee. That's for items like the student activity council. And again, hardship provision will take care of. One thing I want trustees just to be aware of is that Horizons and Station Stretch were charging the same rate. And sure, they're not charging any fee for that. And so that's down to, and then there's other fees for advanced exams. Obviously, these are courses that students would choose to take, not required for graduation, but certainly to supplement their graduation program. And in all cases, those fees are set by the right organization. And that's a hundred and fifty dollars for exam. International Balariet, I want to point out that I had an error on this report. And that is that if you look on page G, International Balariet, and it speaks to that the IB diploma program assess a fee of six hundred and fifty dollars. And then you'll notice on the chart, it's actually one hundred. Seven hundred is the correct price. It went up from six fifty to seven hundred dollars. So in that paragraph, it should say seven hundred dollars is the fee. Okay. And so we'll correct that. I'll also point out that we have one academy. We have the McMillan incentive outdoor academy. The charge is significant, eighteen hundred to twenty two hundred dollars, depending on the nature of activities that they're engaged in. And important note that these costs are shared with families from any entry into the program. So they know well in advance that the fees are significant. I spoke to the fact of any hardship in. And so in conclusion, shared at the beginning, I want the board to be competent that we're in compliance with the school and with our board policies. Again, I mentioned that there's a recommendation before you. And with that, I'm happy to answer questions that you might have.
Do you have any questions? Go ahead, trustee Sergeant.
Well, thank you very much. It looks like it's a great, great report. It's like there's been consultation at the district as well as on the ground. So I really appreciate that. And parents are informed of, you know, what the current fees and what the increase may be. My question with this may not know the answer now, but with the fee levels of funding from the ministry as far as food, and then there's one that can be for bags or and then I believe it's now a third one. Are any of those monies used for something like this? Or would they be part of the hardship support that this school?
Assistant Superintendent McMillan, who's oversight over these funding sources, I'm wondering if you might be able to respond to that thing.
I forget the name of second, but we advocated for the not only food, but.
So there's the student family affordability fund, and that's to deal with anything related to school fees. So they absolutely come play here. So any family that identifies as being any challenges or sometimes schools will reach out directly with having these fees waived. And the other piece, which is the future program is for traditional programming at school, which is more about not specific to cooking, cooking for purchase of different food items supports kids at school.
So what those is also supporting the fees?
Yes.
Thank you.
Go ahead, trustee Belisa.
You, madam, and thank you for the very, very good board. Thanks for the hard work. I guess thank you for consulting with the staff and the parents for implementing this. I guess I'd like to know, what's the basis for charges? On recovery at cost plus whatever ground from the government? And how much would that be that the district is spending for?
Thank you. So thank you for the question through the chair. So this absolutely cost recovery. So in every case, the charges are simply bringing what recouping, what purchasing is required to pay to secure those resources. Same with the exam fees, same international bachelor program, et cetera. So you can be confident that this is a cost process. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have would you like to read it? Do you want to read it or me to read it? I've got it ready if you like.
I can read it. The Board of Education Richmond approved the twenty twenty four twenty schedule of school choose for elementary and secondary schools accordance with the school act.
Thank you. Do I have a seconder? Trustee Wong? All those in favor? Yep. Good. Okay. You passed. Yes, thank you. Business, we don't have any questions from the public? Again, any members are welcome forward? Questions? No. So we have our spending committee reports. Trustee Yang.
Thank you very much, Chairperson. Meeting was held on Tuesday, May fourteenth this year, and the next meeting is scheduled for September twenty twenty four.
Education Committee, we have a recommendation. I'll read and then for a mover. That the Board of Education Richmond approved the twenty twenty four twenty twenty five schedule. Oh, I'm sorry. I was going. Recommendation, pardon me, that the Education direct staff to assess the feasibility and alignment of the recommendations outlined in the attached Continuing Education Program Review Report with Strategic Plan. Subsequently, for to provide the board with an implementation plan encompassing both recommendations already enacted and related for future implementation. Yang seconded by trustee Blotny. All those in favor? Carried, carried. Facilities and building. Trustee Hamaguchi.
A meeting held on April third are attached information and the meeting was held Wednesday, May first, twenty twenty four. Next meeting is scheduled Wednesday, June fifth at four thirty P M. Thank you.
Finance and Legal, trustee Sergeant.
Thank you very, very much. Minutes of the meeting held on April seventeenth are attached. And we held a meeting on May fifteenth and the minutes aren't here yet. And next meeting will be Wednesday, June twelfth at two.
Policy Committee, trustee Blotny.
Policy is going to give trustees a little bit of eyes with their hands voting. There is policy two hundred R and two hundred R two trustee's responsibilities and code of ethics. And this is a policy that trustees worked on themselves along with our Secretary Treasurer. And this is, this was maximated by the ministry that we we follow provincial criteria for our codes of effect now. And so we spent a bit of time and the timeline is in the package developing and updating the policy and look at other policies across provinces. And so because this is a trustee policy, it did not go through the usual processes out to our partners. But we believe that trustee had had a lot of time to vet it. And we feel that it's a comprehensive policy and ready to for approval here. So I'll read the recommendation that the Board of Education approve revised policy two hundred, two hundred dash R one and two hundred dash R two trustee roles, responsibilities and code of ethics in accordance with board policy before creation and revision of policy and regulation.
Second, for the discussion.
I'm sorry. Sorry, I didn't hear.
Second, for the purpose of discussion.
And any questions or conversation? Go ahead.
Yes. One of the roles the trustee is to resent the broader needs of the community and under trustee's code of ethics, paragraph twelve. The trust shall advocate for diverse need of all learners in the community consistent with its obligation under the Human Rights Code. Therefore, this responsibility, we need to exercise our form of expression guaranteed under the Charter of Rights and Freedom and Constitution. On page seven, three, paragraph six, the code of ethics states that the trustee must ensure that they report to speak for the board in any interaction with the public, media, or other entities unless explicitly authorized a law or board policy. And trustee will not express any opinion on the individual's performance unless explicitly authorized by law. Board policy, official board process, and recognize that only the board and not the the question, following question first. Can the trustees interact the public, the media, or other entities as long as they don't report to the board? And secondly, in dealing with the public, media or other entities, candid trustees, express their opinion on matters other than the individual's top performance such as program, policies, curriculum, and even operation of operational matters. It cannot which specific provisions prohibit them. I'd like to have response for those who give me guidance and clearance for the future.
Who are you looking to for a response? Staff?
Reply of my questions.
Yes, which, who would like to respond to your question?
Anybody?
Okay, trustees can interact the media and they usually will respond with their own opinions. They sent on undermined board. I believe that's in the policy. And we elect a board chair who is spokesperson for board. I'm hoping answers your question. As far as interacting with public, that is our job. So we would have to interact with the public to be able to know how to vote on issues and understand the feelings and wishes and and to help people understand and issues that that are affecting districts. So yes, you do interact with the public and we are so really is, it's making her that we should act respectfully toward the board, towards other trustees and the board's direction. Once a decision is made by the board, that because it's a majority of out of seven trustees, once a decision is made. Decision that it will forward and staff will carry out. However, trustees can interact with the but I think there's a certain amount of consent that trustees have to use as well that we're reflecting on the board in a negative light. That's what is in this policy.
Belisa, there is an excellent learning guide that the B C S T, just hear me out for a second, that the B C S T A put and very clearly makes statements and suggestions as how to handle the situation this.
I read that, Madam Chair.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, in the criteria for school's code of conduct released by the Ministry of Trade and B C S T A, nothing that prohibit trustee or expressing opinion to improve learning out. So my question again is number two. In dealing with the public, media or entities, can they trust express their opinion on matters other than individual staff performance such as program, policies, curriculum, and so on and so forth?
As trustee Blotny mentioned, and again, mentioned in the learning guide, trustees have a right to speak to their opinion. But it's most important that you make the statement that this is my opinion. And they also suggest to be very careful with that because sometimes a person's opinion can be, especially if it's something that the board is discussing at the time, can be misconstrued. So I copy of its statement that's made in there is very clear and it's very helpful as to where that lies. But it's important incumbent on the trustee to make sure that they, this is my opinion. So that's, that be. Super now.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
You're welcome. Since now I'm lost where we're.
Can I just follow up? It's so important that what's in the code of ethic is that we is that we, you know, when things are in camera, that we're sharing it could come out, you know, previous to a decision that's being made. You know, trustees, I think it's just common sense as well and did guide us in the process, which you were part of in informing this policy. So if you're not understanding it completely, read through the policy again and through the B C S T A trustee guide.
It's a matter of understanding, madam chair.
Are you disagreeing with them? I guess.
It is the freedom of expression that we are talking here. And if there are a variance in the policies, that two, be a violation of the Charter of Rights and Freedom under section two, as well as the B C Court appeals this decision with the principle of open communication and debate about public political issues is a hallmark of a free and democratic society. The charter is designed to protect. I think the question is, is our policy we are trying to invoke are in accordance with the Charter of Rights and Freedom and the decision of the court?
We.
It lives up to you because there are cases that, you know, even the R T A, the B C S T A raise that questions. And it is decided by the Court of Appeals and and I mean, I guess agreed upon by the Supreme Court. So it doesn't mean that if this written in the policy just common sense is enough. It's after a law and a matter of fact. So I rest into that.
Okay, and I'm going to respond because we did have, and since you asked, you seemed to be asking me the question.
The chair.
We did.
Ask everybody, not to you.
We had a lawyer that actually spent time with, answer all of those questions. Trustee Belisa, make that clear. So and I believe you raised that with the lawyer that was guiding us.
Trustees, sorry. Trustee sent, Paula trustee Hamaguchi. I think, and that's what I got right now, so we'll.
Okay, just for clarity, this is not trustee Blotny's.
Right.
No, no. This is trustee Blotny is the chair of committee. The committee did extensive work, but also the board did extensive work as relate to the time here where we had two workshops where we wanted to hash things out that we, what did we want in this policy? Our policy has always been very good. With B C S T A and the ministry reverse, we said, okay, are we missing some things? Let's add some. So this is board policy. So I just separate the two. I'm very much in agreement with this policy. I think the questions raised, we talked about that at the shops. And I think the policy covers. And I think for the years, we've been very fortunate that we had to go to the country. Yeah, yeah, well, policy to say, blah, 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 blah. We've all agreed on the policy. And now we have a new revision. I think personally, it makes it better. The question around, can you speak for yourself? Yes, I elected by a mass question. I will answer the question from media. And you'll say, this is my personal opinion, my individual opinion, the trustee. If you would like a board response, then you should talk to our chair. The chair does speak for us. The chair speaks for any motions that have been made in any direction the board has given. So I'm very free to speak. But I'm pretty wise on what the board has had conversations with, what our staff have said on perhaps a topic. And so you don't, you build confidence in system. And so, yes, I can share my thoughts. But once, as been mentioned, a motion has been moved, seconded, voted on. It now belongs to the board. And so we have to make sure as trustee enact that motion. So therefore, we have to get behind the motion. So you are free to, I mean, you've been a trustee a long time. You know, this works. You're free to discuss what you feel about something. The media contact you, you can give your opinion with criteria saying, it's me. Trustee Belisa, it's not a board. Now, if there is working on something that is in process or whatever or in deep discussions, you also don't want to prevent the process that's happening. Because we have a collaborative district. And we want all of those discussions to happen first before necessarily going out and say, I think thou. And so all those things, common sense, and respectful of all processes we have, of all policies. I think you're well aware of how it works, it's working. If you had a suggestion now to add, to make it more clear, then I think should bring that up now. If not, I think we should just approve the policy. Once the policy is enacted, we can have another workshop to say, well, how do we make this come to life? What do you think? So I would suggest we pass the policy and then tune it later as far as the implementation of it.
Let it be clear, I don't care. I am not against, against.
Trustee Belisa. Trustee Maguti is next to speak, and then I'm going to call the question.
Thank you.
Okay.
So my call is just, you know, in terms of an opinion, I think we're all entitled to opinion. The question comes, or the process is, you know, making sure they qualify your opinion so that you're sharing your own opinion as opposed to this is what the board said. There's a big distinction between the two, obviously. The other thing too, that we don't have control over is how other people interpret you said or what you've written. And so I think we have to be careful there too. Because sometimes, I mean, you have a conversation with the person and then, you know, someone asks you what a person said, well, you might remember only half of it or only say a third of it. And some of the key pieces that you might want to say of now, in his opinion or in her opinion, she believes, he believes, blah, blah, so far. If you leave those words out, and then it can be, you know, wide open as to, oh, the board wants to do this, board wants to do that. We have control over our own behavior. And I think we all know the rules and we need, and we do a good job of following it. I think sometimes where it breaks down is when the information is disseminated as accurately as it should be, and it could be for a variety of reasons. You know, people edit things. People don't always hear all the things. Like tells me that all the time. Talking about me. And so it's, it's, things will get lost in translation. And hopefully, I mean, if I said something that was my opinion and it was portrayed, you know, in the paper that, you know, Hannah Maguti on behalf of Board of Education said this, this, then I would probably take steps to try to correct that. But the reality is that it's going to happen. Like, we are responsible for our own actions. And I think we all do a good job. Like I said, things are perceived out there in the media world and the social world and legal world, it could be something totally different, so. But your initial question, you think we, you know, we are allowed to have an opinion. My opinion.
Yeah, okay, I'm going to call the question.
Can I have the last word, please? Thank you, madam chair. Let it be clear, I'm not against code of ethics. I respect and I value and I'm in compliance with it. What I'd like the board to know that our policy will not encroach the free speech guaranteed by the Constitution. Thank you.
Trustee Belisa, I think, yes, okay. Question is called, do I have a mover and a second? I can't even remember if we.
I moved it, so we just need a second.
A second.
Secondary, okay. And all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, trustee Blotny.
We have some more. So policy two oh four R, vision and revision of policy relations. This is a policy committee is bringing forward some minor revisions. And kind of not really a minor because the we are looking at the creation or revision of policy relations through a D I lens, diversity, equity, inclusion. And we, the provincial government developed and posted on a document titled Terminology Indigenous Context. And so, and also using terms like such as stakeholder or instead of a partner group, which is, you know, has stakeholder has connotates to our indigenous peoples and other items in the policy. And so therefore, it's a minor revision. The post began in February, and so it not go into partner group processes because it is just considered a minor revision to policies. Important, so before you, the recommendation is that Board of Education approve, attach, revise policy two oh four R, creation of policy and regulations.
A second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Oh, good. Oh, no, I just didn't see it when I turned my head. That's why I just wanted to make it. Okay, thank you, Carrie.
Okay, and we have more. And that is policy four hundred dash R five, which is smoking and alcohol consumption. And policy eight oh one dash R, community use of district facility. And this one came up to revise some of the language in the policy that created a little bit of, really, you know, we're looking at aligning it with what practices and policies of other boards across the province. And so this one will go out partner group review. So the recommendation is that policy committee commands to the Board of Education that advise policy four dash R five, smoking and alcohol consumption, and policy eight oh one point four R, community use of district facilities be referred to partner review process for the period of May twenty, July twenty third, two thousand and twenty four.
Secondary, thank trustee Yang. All those in favor? Anybody have question?
No more discussions.
All those in favor? Opposed?
And then, sorry, I lost my leg. No, I got it. Minutes meeting held for fifteen minutes are attached. A meeting was held Wednesday, May thirteenth. And the next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, June tenth at eleven AM. Just wanted to thank our offer, all the work they do on the policy. And it's not, it's not easy writing and revising policy. And we've done, you know, better work, I would say, in last year with policies. And so it's greatly appreciated very much.
Board Committee and Representative Reports. Council Board Liaison Committee will be meeting scheduled for September twenty twenty four. B C S T A.
Nothing to report, board chairperson.
And B C P C C. Trustee. We don't have a correspondence this evening. So I will ask for a mover and second for adjournment. Move trustee Hamaguchi, seconded by trustee Yang. All those in favor? Thank you very much.
Good night.